To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor says his apologies, he's not feeling well again tonight.
Just, just in, Jan also had a call that she was...
Yeah.
So, we'll call the regular Deeper Bay City Council meeting, December 6th.
Ruston, Walden, Weisman?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Matha? Bates?
Yes.
Grant?
Right.
And first order of business is to approve the minutes of November 15th, regular council meeting.
Mr. Council President, I make the motion that we approve the November 15th, 2016 city council meeting note as written.
Second. It's moved to second, any discussion? Call the roll.
Weisman?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Grant?
Right.
And council payable, I did review them today, and they're all good, I'll be at a very high amount.
Mr. Council President, I make the motion that we go ahead and approve the council payable as is.
Second. Okay, move to second, any discussion? Call the roll.
Gambino?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Weisman?
Yes.
And special orders, do we have any?
Don't have any.
Reports of officers, boards, county committees?
Don't have any.
Public comments?
Hello.
Hi.
All right, unfinished business, May marijuana tax collection agreement, Oregon Department of Revenue.
Okay, very quick recap, at the last council meeting, you all had a copy of the agreement, the form of agreement that had been provided from the Oregon Department of Revenue, and I asked for your authorization to have the city pretty review it. He has done that, and he finds absolutely nothing wrong with it at all, and he says it's a good movement. In conversation with the Department of Revenue, they have reviewed our ordinance that we adopted to have this 3% tax that was verified by the voters, and they looked at it and said, "Well, you don't have a late fee or penalty or interest in that," and we don't. And they strongly recommend that we have something like that. He says, "Because what you're doing is you're just gonna be like any other fee, if people pay late, you're gonna have a hammer." So, he said that he strongly recommended that the city council consider that. So, that's my question tonight, is that something you'd be okay with as far as adding to the ordinance? And what it would mean would be, we'd have to draft up an amending ordinance, bring it back to you for your adoption, and what it would do would be creating a late penalty and an interest charge on taxes that were not paid. And that would be attached with the agreement that we would enter into with the state, and then they would follow whatever penalty and interest.
And does that still allow us the time before there was a deadline that we had to decide by?
Yes, yes, we've got, we want to enter into this agreement with the state, we have until about the middle of January, I think it's the 17th of January, we have to have something back to that. So, if, I would recommend that, just about it.
Will you make a motion?
On that, it would be helpful.
I'll make a motion that we have our attorney, I guess, draft the...
Yes.
Yes. The, that was an interest.
Okay.
I'll second.
Moved to second, any further discussion?
Bates?
Moving out.
Grant?
Aye.
Weisman?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
We'll work real hard and bring it back to you at the December meeting, so if we keep moving forward.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you. New business, 2016-17 employee safety numbers.
If you all have a chance to read the memo and see on the back...
We got one, those standards.
We got, again, we're doing, we are doing really, really well with our workers' comp safety. We have our meetings, we watch the videos, everybody, we're just, the city's doing really well. There wasn't time when the city did not do so well. And that is where that council policy came from. It was an incentive back in the day to be safer, and thereby have less workers' comp claims, and thereby save on what the city pays for workers' comp premiums. So, the policy is that any time that the city's experience rating modification factor is less than 100%, in other words, your premium is 100%, and if our record is so good, we're being so good and safe, that it's, our premium is reduced, and this year it's, we're paying 76%. So, the policy enacted by the council back in the day was whenever that occurs, when it's less than 100%, then that difference between what we would have paid at 100% and what the city saves by the reduced rating is going to be distributed as a safety bonus to the employees, that's an incentive program. So, in keeping with that policy, this year's actual savings between what 100% would have been and the reduced down to 76%, the actual total savings is $5,416.59, which is under what we budgeted, we budgeted a little over $7,000 this year. And so, we're respectfully requesting authorization to distribute that bonus.
Who's our insurance company?
See, we have workers' comp through city insurance services.
Oh, yeah, because I'm just thinking of SAFE, who I have an insurance from. And because I guess it's a nonprofit corporation, I just, they probably don't work the same way that if I, I under that experience rating and everything, they give, they give, they give me back a dividend.
This is...
That can, that can be substantial amounts.
Well, we don't, the city doesn't get a dividend, the way CIS works it is...
It is reduction rate, I'm sorry.
Yeah, instead of paying 100%, the city would pay 76%.
So, given the winter vision, do we distribute that 5,000 what?
The $5,416.59.
Mr. Mayor, unless there's further discussion, I'd like to move to distribute that money amongst employees, given, given with the past policy, yeah, policy. Move to second. It moved to second, any discussion? Let's call the roll.
Grant?
Aye.
Weisman?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Thank you.
And by the way, I was present at the Lake Oregon Cities Convention when this was presented, and we got a round of applause over from the whole room. It was only, I think, three in our category.
Well, it's good. We've, we've, I, I just can't, I'm so proud of the city and the employees for working, it's work, and its time, and its energy put into this safety program. And I, I think I'm gonna have to, because we've been at the gold level for some years now, and it's really, it's really great.
We get platinum here.
Maybe we go platinum. And it's really cool, so thank, thank you, we all appreciate your support.
We try to keep up on the safety films and the...
Safety handle lift and all that coming out.
Yeah, we've got boards down at the plants of how to lift the load and, yeah, all that stuff, little reminders, so. Do you know why they make signs that says how many days it's been?
Without, yeah, we used to do that on the chalkboard, and then they were putting, how many days without? Everything, if something had happened, we put days without, driving over the radio. Because that happened, it fell off the back door and got throw over, so that would go on there.
Okay, next, we have a change order for Devil's Lake Rock Company to extend that time.
Yeah, yeah, so, Devil's Lake's, the watering, I can touch base on this, it was part of my staff report, but it's going really well. The watering is installed, it's service lines to each home, in the meantime, the other line is still intact, which is really a tricky part, because a lot of times these mains go in and you have to, like, do certain part of it, hook people up, get it approved, and then work on another, this way, they were able to go through and get the whole thing done. And then now we go through the lights, the bacterial sample went in, everything is clear, it's been quarantined, disinfected, blown off, all the levels are perfect. So, it went really well, this time here. But what they are having problems with now is the delay in paving. So, they put in a extension to tie just for, basically, it's road and driveway, getting back to doing the paving. But it also will provide enough time to get the fire hall, has some delays with their timeframe of hooking the water line up to the fire hall, and then there's been quite a bit of expensive work done by the channel house, so I think it's fair, they can do it really good.
Yeah. So, they're not, question, so they're, they're not making asphalt right now?
No, it's, yeah, well, they will if, like, there's emergency road work that the state needs, but yeah, for a project like this, I think if we had a stretch of dry weather, say for a week, if all, everything was ready, they could do it, it's just the timing.
They wouldn't make it for me, I mean, I called three companies, and they never called me back.
There's Knife...
It's a very small town, yeah.
Knife River is the only other paper, and they're, they're in the valley, so they have a, they make the call, I guess.
So, do we want to, do we want to accept this change order? Make a motion.
I move we accept the change order.
Second. Move to second, any further discussion? Is that any discussion? That was something, call the roll.
Weisman?
Yes.
Matha? Oops. Gambino?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Okay. Wow, we're down to canvas of votes from November 8th.
You mean, no, there's actually two documents. Rather than having one long document, I separated the major vote from the candidates' vote. So, there's actually two canvas of votes for your approval. So, the canvas of votes on the imposition of a 3% tax on retail marijuana items is, you show them a copy of this, attached to the copy should be the certification we got from the county, and yes votes for 685, no votes 251, under votes 27, over vote zero. So, upon your motion to accept that canvas of votes, we'll take it to the next.
Mr. Council President, I make the motion that we accept the canvas of votes for the imposition of a 3% tax on retail marijuana items.
Second. And it's been moved to second, any discussion?
Gambino?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Weisman?
Yes.
And then the second canvas of votes is the candidates'. It reflects the votes cast for the, quite, number, the mayor, the council position number one, council position number two, council position number three, and council position number five, which was a two-year term, unexpired. Do you want me to recap that?
Only the rest of the council would like to. Is everybody happy with the results? That's a, never mind. Let's track that question.
Do you feel that the canvas of votes appropriately reflects the certification from the county?
Let's do that, okay.
I would make one note, 963 votes cast from the city of Deeper Bay, that's a very, that's, most ever.
Why can't that happen every time? Incredible.
Usually, and when there's presidential election, there's a better, but this is...
This is huge.
Yeah, it's huge.
All right, how about a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the canvas of votes for the mayor council positions number one, two, three, and five.
I'll second that. Moved to second, any further discussion? Let's call the roll.
Bates?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Weisman?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Correspondence.
I have three items of correspondence this evening. One is from Melon Island, it's a handwritten note, you all should have a copy of it. He would like the city to test the tsunami warning sirens. He thinks that we should set them off after any major earthquake in different parts of our world, and also in winter months, October through March, so he's presented that for your consideration. Second letter is from John O'Brien, and he's requesting you consider, do you all know where Beechville Street is? That the council considers having no parking on both sides of that street.
Power Lodge, right, it's a road that goes from Williams to Power Lodge. And the far corner is the new medical marijuana shop. That's a lot.
No, that's Beechville Street.
One more block up. Yeah, there's a, there's a... Oh, it's the vacant lot that's gonna have the...
The tiny, tiny hospital.
Right, there's gonna be several cabins in there, and not a lot of parking, so there's concern with the off-street parking, to make sure the roads are clear.
Has it, so far, has it been any problem?
No, the, there's, that's kind of vacant lot though, now that it's being developed, it might cause off-street parking due to the size of the block itself. So, they may have to park on 101, they're, they're hoping to be parking on 101, but it makes Beechville, which is kind of a narrow road, no parking. Is it, you start parking on it, it's kind of quite narrow, it's kind of steep also.
Which I might, the process to enact parking restrictions of any kind on a city street is through adoption of a resolution by the city council. So, if the council wants to, I mean, some streets we have no parking on this side, and some streets we have no parking on both sides, and we've some, we've got a couple places in town where there's height limit parking or height limit parking. I think we have one of each of those. So, most of our resolutions we have in the books are restricting parking, like Williams Avenue. Most of that street is no parking both sides, not all of it, but, but most of it. Ainsley Avenue, I think that's both sides, I think. So, but the way that happens is that the council directs staff to draft up a resolution, bring it back to you for your adoption, and then it's, it's recorded on...
Excuse me, sorry, miss.
And that resolution also directs that upon the adoption of any limitation of parking, the city has to pull signs and make the public aware. You just don't pass the resolution, you, you also put the signs out, so that's the process.
So, how many tiny houses have we talked about on this spot?
Four hundred offices, whatever.
And required, what, two parking spaces per unit?
And they, there's a planning commissioner here, I think it's one parking, for a tourist accommodation, I believe it's one parking space per bedroom, something like that.
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I don't think much of a lot, but I believe that's the requirement, so, and that is, that's, that parking requirement, they can't use street parking.
Right.
It's gotta be on the property.
I knew it was one parking spot per bedroom plus one additional per dwelling unit.
Could be, I wasn't in the planning meeting when we were considering that, that application.
Well, I can get back to the council at the next meeting.
I, I guess there's, yeah, one question, if you don't mind, Council President. My mind, you know, we could, I suppose, you know, there's a new council coming on, I don't know, but if, if we wanted to address this now, and have them, have, if we felt like strongly enough about it, Mr. Bryant's here, maybe we could get up, ask Mr. Bryant to verbal, maybe, he's got this letter, it's pretty good. We could draft, I suppose we could, and then have a discussion, because I'll, in the meantime, I, I'll do drive-bys up there and see what I think too, how wide the street is.
It's a little...
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. With no shoulders?
None.
Yeah, there's no...
There's no curves?
There's a curb on that, just down the side.
Adjacent to the motel building, there's a sidewalk, but that's it.
I'm pretty sure I parked there before.
I doubt it, I've never seen your truck there.
No, that one I stayed, before, I stayed at the cattle lodge, and there's somebody else on, I'd have parked there.
You have a whole lot behind the motel, I doubt if you parked there.
Okay, my god, man.
Is this something that the council would like to put on the next agenda?
We could, I, I, we could draft a, I would make a motion and draft a, a, a resolution that for the staff, I mean, for the council to consider next meeting, goes out of the air.
I would second that.
All right, moved to second, any further discussion on that?
I have a question, so drafting the resolution, do you want to just follow Mr. O'Brien's request and have no parking both sides?
Yes.
Yeah.
No tiny car parking.
No tiny cars.
Wait a minute, they're really that small.
We could, we could slash, except tiny cars, you know, out.
I will add one other thing, a number of times, semi-trailers, the tractor drivers will stay at the motel, and they will park their tractors in motel parking lot. And when that, when they come down the street, that takes up an awful lot of, I mean, not the trail, just the tractor itself.
Oh.
And the...
That thing's eight feet wide, right there.
Easily, yeah, and, you know, a fire, fire engine is 10 feet mirror to mirror, so.
Okay. Good point. Thank you. I'll, yeah.
Grant?
Aye.
Weisman?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
All right. Last piece of correspondence is a resignation email from Ken White. He's gonna be leaving Deeper Bay, so he's resigning from Parks Commission position.
He was a key member of Parks, I worked on a lot of projects, he's a, he's a good egg, okay. Sorry to see him go.
So, you would accept, move to accept the resignation, because you're vacating, and that reminds me...
I'll make that motion for draft board.
Second. Okay, move to second, any further discussion on that? Let's call the roll.
Weisman?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
And with that, do we need to declare vacancies?
You know, I just kind of assumed that it's declared in this situation, but, but you just reminded me, thank you. Wanted to speak with you tonight about Joe Fisher Brown's resignation. Now, that's leaving a vacancy, half a term on the council. So, my question to you, I, I was getting ready to put the notice out, accepting applications, and then I thought, I'm gonna ask the council when you'd like to close that. Do you want to run the notice, take applications, and hopefully maybe have somebody to appoint that first meeting in January? Are you gonna have all the commissioners that have been renewed, or a longer time or a shorter time?
Oh, I, we have one more meeting this month, or is it?
One more, it's a rhythm.
Okay, and that would be two weeks from now?
Yeah.
If we, if we, if we posted that position right away, would there be the time allot, would we fulfill the time allot if we wanted to put it, if there were any applications in the next two weeks to be able to vote on it, class meeting this year?
There's no specified time for this announcement, it's up to the council.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we put out the announcements for applications for the help of council position, and that we put it on the agenda for any, any applications that might come in last meeting of this year.
I would like that. Okay, move to second, any further discussion? Call the roll.
Gambino?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Weisman?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
And city staff report.
Speaking of notices and such, I think I gave you all a copy of the expiring terms, end of the year commissions, all of, all of that we're advertising for.
Yep.
As normal practice, people that are now incumbents and have expiring terms, we're kind of letting them know if they're interested in renewing. Don't know if they will be, but we'll find out, I think they're closing that at the end of this month. Hoping to present and have scheduled interviews with applicants for that first meeting in January. The other thing is, is the advertisement for the city recorder job position has been out now almost a week. We're gonna be running that ad through the next three weeks, the League of Oregon Cities, it's gonna run for a month, the Association of Oregon Counties, it's gonna run for a month, it's gonna be in two weeks, both NewsGuard and NewsTime, so the word's getting out. I think WordArt has a lot to do with that, so.
Didn't we also put a tunnel light, something?
You know, I looked into that, and I, I did not put an ad up in that one, basically because of the dollars. By the time I had everything else paid for, I was running out of money again, so. Okay, so we'll keep you posted. Other than that, gonna have one more meeting before Christmas, woo!
I got a couple things, so, going back to Mr. Nyle, she was concerned about the sirens test. I did inform him that the sirens do test daily, silencer, at noon, and that, maybe going into next spring, we could put a committee together to come up with possibly some direction for the sirens. We've gotta make some decisions on a new warranty that's gonna be expired. There's a lot of different questions, and, and having audible tests, maybe one of the issues also. But for now, I think for, we're doing okay through this year, and they, they do test, and, and I have a radio, and Josh has a radio, the fire chief, that we keep at the house, that we can activate the system remotely if we have to. So, it's not like, you know, something, if there's an emergency and it gets through to me or to Josh, we both have the ability to get that thing going. And at what level it goes, if, if it's a tsunami or wildfire, to windstorm, there's all kinds of different canvassed, there's seven different program notices in it.
We can, could be, that started a lot of work.
Do we believe Barbara was.
Right, exactly.
Ahead of that. Do, do we know if we have still some written material from what they had already done?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So that could go.
Right, and all that, and a lot of that was to, what, what the, the, uh, cause the, the sayings for each, um, particular event had to be worded a certain way because there's liability involved in what you want to tell folks, and things like that, if the county recommends, and it was a, a, a lot of doing and redoing, but right now I think we're at a point, uh, where we need more aggressive in, in the future. I told Mel that and that if we just start, there, there's so much concern with people that, I mean, if we just say test, that people call and wanna know, what, what did it just say? I just heard something, what do I do? So it's really, really a tricky one, so. He realized, anyway, I had a pretty good conversation with him. He's concerned.
True, so, I mean, uh, I think it'd be fruitful, I think, I mean, once a year to test all the emergency awareness vehicles that we have, I mean, vehicle by name, the, the tsunami, uh, you know, say that, let's, let's assume that there's an earthquake and we do the, and that, that it could generate a tsunami, that we do, that we announce it to all the public and, uh, give everybody a lot of notice and, and use everything that we have, like the call law. But say this is a test, okay?
We could tie it in with the counties.
Yeah.
Their.
I'd really think it would be valuable for the community, um, going forward, um, because, I mean, it, it can happen.
Yeah, I, I like the fact that piggybacking with, with the council's other stuff, because we test the trailer and and the whole county's involved, or it's not just Eagle Bay, that, so we can say, hey, we're, we're, we're along with everybody now.
Right.
So, yeah, the state's involved.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's definitely something that we should.
Start a dialogue on, with the, with the county.
Yeah, and we need to figure out that, cause the sirens are in a five-year warranty phase, we need to either renew that or look for another company, maybe go out for an RFP on, on the, uh, um, maintenance.
Do we have any idea of what that's going to cost us?
I do.
This was a five-year.
Yeah, this was a five-year, I don't, hurry me now, but I don't remember what the dollar number was.
I think the five-year warranty cost us about eighteen thousand dollars, almost.
I thought it was like.
It could have been, it could have been, I remember this part, I didn't even talk about.
It's something off the, off the road. Yeah.
So, gee, I mean, I don't know what they do for that, do they?
They, they travel down, they, they do a lot of battery, um, upkeep and there's a lot of different circuits and stuff they have to redo, um, in, in each panel.
Do the charges for the batteries?
Uh, no, that was all on warranty, it's their, uh, cause there is a triple, so they are all powered and there's a triple charge, it wasn't the battery. They're basically battery powered units. But they are hooked up to U D because of the charging, so.
Right.
Okay, my next item is the raptor sunk on Thanksgiving and I don't, I don't really talk to the council about it. Um, there's a lot of, um, red tape involved with the boat sinking and it was just a day or two before, we got the information that we have, they, we didn't leave the title, we got it put in the city's name and, and it sunk Thanksgiving and so we were pretty much liable for the boat, the city, and, and, um, it, uh, my, I don't know, the crew, so I tried to get a salvage crew up, I don't know if you guys know the story, Aunt Barbara was down there, but, um, we couldn't get a salvage crew that day, and I tried, there's like four on the Oregon coast and they were all busy. Because of similar stuff. And just to stage, I found out, just to get a, a company out of Coos Bay that does boat salvage, to stage was ten thousand dollars. Just to get here, get their equipment here. They wanted the money upfront and then, then they were, you know, I thought, geez, this is crazy. But I was, and the Coast Guard was on, on the phone with me and, and I was on the phone with the state, DQ and stuff, but the crew pulled together, they did a great job, our city crew, but they did wonderful and they, they, a lot of help from the locals and everybody had their point of view, but we ended up getting the boat up and, and kept the water out, kept the boom around it. There was some discharge in the bay and the city is responsible for that sheen and, um, we, we, we've got a pretty stern verbal that, and we can't let it happen again, there's some paperwork that is still to get, to be filled out that, um, I have to sign for, but, uh, I had a phone call from one gentleman from, um, the Coast Guard about the vessel sinking, it was almost like the city was writing Miranda rights for this. It was pretty scary. Um, I didn't realize that after January first, twenty sixteen, a lot of new laws went into effect with the vessel sinking and leaving a sheen and into waters and stuff, it's pretty scary stuff, that we don't want to have this happen again, so I had a pretty good, uh, lesson learned type on this, on this vessel, so I'll make sure this doesn't happen.
So was this a derelict vessel?
Yeah, it was a boat left in the bay that, that paid more and we had to go through a lot of red tape to, uh, yeah, and then we were gonna, uh, auction it off or, in, for surplus, which is now we're doing, now that it's out of the water. But I think one of the lessons learned was, was maybe if, if this happens again, get the vessel out of the water.
Right, yeah.
Um, some, at some point, we were, you know, we were advised, well, it's, you know, you can maybe have an easier time because it was in the summertime and it would probably sell better, cause we didn't have a trailer, I was, we were trying to search for trailers and they were, you know, ten thousand dollars for a thirty-foot boat, but our trailer's pretty standard for, for a trailer. So we really didn't have it in the budget and it just, things just kinda went along until we had a winter storm and then it just got bad. But again, it was a, it was a big learning curve, so.
If you're interested in it, it's.
Yeah, it's for, it's for, um, surplus by the nine, ten o'clock on the ninth.
It's on half a trade.
Uh, December, it's, uh, highest bid. With a minimum of five hundred.
Five hundred. Is that to pay somebody to take it away?
No, no.
We're, we're trying to sell.
Oh, 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 okay.
For offering a sale.
Okay.
You can buy it for five hundred.
And then.
I know why. And I think you'd probably get it for that price.
I know why, I think.
There's too much.
Three gentlemen are interested.
Is there really?
Oh, really? You go, yeah. My, my friend Fella, uh, is already twenty years old, purchased the Jimbo and he's now wanting to purchase the Raptor. Yeah.
All right.
So, um, uh, the other item I had was the, the crew, we got the Christmas tree up for the light ceremony, which is on the tenth with Chamber Commerce and the kids, no one's gonna be there singing and Santa's making appearance, they found Santa. So it's one with that, you know, and, uh, there'll be cider, chocolate, and candy canes and carols and all that. It's gonna, uh, start, it's gonna go from about four P M. to about five thirty here, right, and they're gonna gather around for singing and stuff. They're gonna do the light ceremony about maybe four thirty or forty-five. And with that, that was it for my.
That's it.
Get the park.
Okay, well, we're done with council comments. Don't comment.
Don't comment?
Not here. Ah, thank you all.
Um, I just had one comment and I was reading it today, it's kind of important. Did you guys all look at the L O C bulletin that came out this last week? Or a couple weeks ago? It was the November twenty, the Supreme Court release, uh, release of the public meetings decision on the, uh, Handy versus Lang County case, you guys remember that? About, uh, speaking one-on-one with other council members and this went to court, uh, and the, um, what, it was the, the main county was claiming it was the, uh, public meetings law violation, because these counselors talked to each other one-on-one about one particular item. And so they said that was actually a courtroom. Well, now the Supreme Court said, no, it's not, in this case. However, they go on to say, uh, it, it could happen easily again. So just this one case, they said it's not. It's not a violation of that.
Right, now, I understood.
I just thought something, everybody should be.
Well, that's great, I'm glad you pointed that out, um, Council President. Um, there are, so, I, I, as I remember, there are some nuances, uh, I don't think one-on, one-on-one is a thing, but if somebody could pull together that, the idea that, um, it would be a violation if you talked about the same subject, being with Charlie, yeah.
Right, right, okay, and then, you know, you asked Charlie, why don't you call the actions? So, yeah, you have to be careful. And that's all I have. So, seeing no more business, we are adjourned. Seven forty-two.